Thank you. Okay, welcome, everybody, to our planning board meeting Wednesday, June the 19th. And we'll call the meeting to order. Do we have any declaration of conflicts today? Seeing none, can I have an approval of the agenda?
Yeah.
Moved by Counselor McKay. Seconded by...
By.
Okay, why is there feedback, Counselor, or Chris Fournier? Oh, there's none anymore. Did you guys hear that feedback?
I heard an echo.
Okay. Okay. Maybe it stopped. Uh, maybe it stopped now. Okay. So all those in favor of the agenda? Wonderful. Okay. And now, can I get an adoption of the minutes from Tuesday, June the 4th? Moved by Lee. Seconded by Paul. All those in favor? Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we can move on to our reports. We have four this evening, and they're all for recommendations for, um, to move on to public consultation. So we're going to start with, um, item number one, and it's an unaddressed parcel at St. Peters Road, PID 140087. And it's a requ- uh, it's a request to, um, recommend to council to proceed to public consultation concerning our request for an amendment to the City of Charlottetown's official plan. And I'll turn that over to you, Michael.
Thank you so much. Um, so this application is a request for rezoning and an official plan amendment related to lands that are, uh, at the city's extent on St. Peters Road. The following is a request to proceed to public consultation concerning an application meant to establish a base land use designation under the official plan and a base zone under the zoning and development bylaw for an unaddressed subject property identified as PID 140087. The request is intended to establish base policies and base zoning regulations to enable future development of the subject property that is yet to be determined. PID 140087 is, uh, subject lands are currently undeveloped and presently used for agricultural purposes. The property fronts onto St. Peters Road with a secondary frontage on, uh, PEI Route 25. The property is roughly 69 acres in size, and it's the only large undeveloped piece of land in the lo- in the immediate area. The property is bounded to the north and east by lands outside of the City of Charlottetown's boundary. The south by St. Peters Road, and to the west by several privately owned properties accessed by Grant Street, uh, that are within the Business Park Industrial M3 Zone. Other properties located near the site are zoned as ERMUVC, uh, East Royalty Mixed Use Village Center, and several are without zoning. Regarding that lack of zoning, an annexation occurred in 2022, or was completed in 2022, that brought these lands into the city boundary. The annexation process did not include the establishment of a zone or an official plan, uh, land use, nor did it result in updates to our existing policies. These lands are some of the only unzoned land within the City of Charlottetown. The lands are not included in current policy but are a logical extension of several existing policies for the City of Charlottetown. The subject property is surrounded on all in-city sides by land belonging to the East Royalty Master Plan. The subject property is on St. Peters Road corridor identified in the new draft plan as well. Regarding some of our policies, uh, some guidance regarding land use, uh, that exists in the, um, the secondary plan for East Royalty kind of guides where we, we looked at this. So one kind of consideration overall that, that's important to mention is that since no policy is outlining this, we are kind of working off of adjacent policies, um, to try to create our policy support for this. The secondary plan outlines a variety of relevant considerations for the village center land use and commercial lands within the planned area, including the following guidance. The village center is intended to become vibrant mixed-use center within the community that promotes pedestrian-oriented retail and service commercial uses, medium and high-density residential uses, as well as other employment, community, and institutional uses in order to bring greater activity to both the day and at night. It also guides us to ensure that the development within the commercial areas is comprehensively planned to ensure that the impacts of servicing, access, lodging, and parking can be adequately addressed. In addition to the vision intended for the, uh, village center, additional commercial uses will be encouraged and provided for at various other locations along St. Peters Road, which is subject to provincial approval. These other commercial locations will enable more traditional forms of commercial uses, which will allow larger-scale, space-intensive retail uses more focused on, uh, for private automobiles. In order to improve the economic viability of commercial centers, consolidation of properties is encouraged to ensure that the functionally obsolete structures are renovated or removed, and more efficient intensive utilization of land is achieved. These are kind of the policies that guide consideration for future uses within the East Royalty Plan, uh, specifically when those may involve commercial uses. There is other guidance for residential uses, but I just want to, uh, point out again that this is not a development application. They're wanting to establish a base use. So these kind of considerations, though we do need to consider them as part of whether or not this use is appropriate for the site, it is not like these uses are being proposed at this time. These are just guidance that exist for them. As a road network and city serving, servicing is not being proposed by this application, amending the property's land use designation and zoning does not preclude more detailed planning and development that would need to occur, uh, going forward to develop this site. Uh, it does not preempt that because no road network is being proposed, individual parcel land uses is not being proposed. This is supported by the East Royalty Master Plan, which states that within the village center area, the city may prepare either independently or in conjunction with major landowners or relevant development interests of village center master plan, which must include the following elements. It includes lots of elements, but one of them is the road network, which acts as a limitation to, to, uh, prevent, uh, going forward preemptive use of this or preemptive development of this site, um, based off of the, the land use being provided. Um, this, this does not necessarily preclude that detailed planning that would need to happen later on. Regarding the official plan, the application proposes to consolidate various land use, existing land use into a comprehensive planning area designed to facilitate the development. So in terms of all the guiding philosophies for, uh, the, in the guiding settlement element of the official plan, these would, these would, uh, by and large, meet those kind of recommendations, though, once again, no use is being proposed. Um, these, these kind of broad guiding settlement, uh, consistency is met, but no development is currently being proposed. The secondary plan does not cover the subject lands due to the plan's preparation prior to the annexation of these lands. Though the property can be considered a logical extension of that plan, the intent of the secondary plan is to provide a long-term vision for the area to ensure well-planned, contiguous development that is consistently, uh, broadly and not piecemeal or ad hoc developed. The subject lands are near an area intended to be a village center land use. Um, the, these are a section of St. Peters Road between McCray Drive and McWilliams Road, which was specified in the existing plan to become this land use, though, once again, this parcel was not addressed in that plan. In conclusion, the proposal represents a rare opportunity for new greenfield development on a large site within the City of Charlottetown that is surrounded by existing developed neighborhoods and has immediate access to municipal services. Um, the proposal also represents a unique opportunity to enable the village center concept as outlined in the, uh, West, uh, East Royalty Master Plan due to the project, uh, the property's large size and access to St. Peters Road, the property's location on a major corridor near an area already planned for this land use, and the flexibility afforded by the large size of the parcel itself. Village Center is the most appropriate use considering the location design criteria outlined within the actual plan itself as well. With that considered, the request for rezoning and, uh, official plan amendment, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages that planning board recommend to council to proceed to public consultation concerning eight, the request to amend Appendix A of the future land use map of the City of Charlottetown from unlisted land uses to village center commercial, and a request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from NA not assigned to East Royalty Mixed Use Village Center, ERMUVC, for the unaddressed, uh, property loca- uh, identified as 140087.
Uh, thank you, Michael. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor McKay. I believe it's in your ward.
It is, yep. No, and it's great to see that this is moving ahead. That land has been annexed for a long time, and it'll be great to figure out what it'll be able to be zoned and stuff for. I'm just confirming, will this be at the June scheduled public planning meeting, or is this more of a July?
It doesn't meet the seven-day window, so it would have to go to July.
July, okay. July 17?
Uh, I think that there is a special meeting, but I, I haven't confirmed those dates, but it would not be able to meet the June, uh, just based off the seven-day window.
If someone could send that to me, I just want to be able to let as many people...
I can confirm there's a, there is a public meeting on July 17th.
Wonderful. I'll put that out to my residents. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, not so much in this one. What, what were you referring, Michael, to between, uh, something between, uh, McCray Drive and McWilliams Road? What were you referring to with that?
In the East, uh, East Royalty Master Plan, that area is part of the commercial guidance. Um, so...
Part of the what?
The, the guidance regarding commercial, uh, like, development. So in that section, there is a specific area that is, the goal of the plan is to establish this, this village center use.
Similar to what this is?
It would be the same...
Smaller scale?
But it would be on the smaller scale parcels between those two roads.
Okay.
So some of them have already established that land use, and some, it, it's kind of the long-range plan of that plan to bring those in as this village center use. So the, the plan was created i- with the idea of that being the walkable area of the plan, uh, in that center section of the northern part of St. Peters Road.
So that, uh, area is still left in that? Between McCray Drive and McWilliams Road, that's still there, so this would be another addition on to that?
So since this is beyond those lands, um, this is not addressed in that plan.
Okay.
These, that, the reason those parcels are mentioned is because there's specific guidance saying that should become this use.
Right.
Whereas this land, we're kind of trying to find the applicable policy statements that inform this, if that makes sense.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Um, thank you for that, Michael. And just so we all know, we will see this again aft- you know, if, if we accept staff's recommendation to move it on to council for public consultation, this will return to us again. So once we see the public presentation, there will probably be additional questions, but I'll keep it open to the floor. Does anyone else have any questions on this? If not, do I have somebody that would like to move this on to council? Okay. Moved by Lee and seconded by Paul. So questions on, the resolutions on the floor? Any questions? No, question called. All those in favor? Any opposed? Great. So that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for that, Michael. Okay, next on our agenda, um, we have Sonia here to present, and it's 94 Watts Avenue, PID 757484. It's a request to recommend to council to proceed to public consultation concerning us a proposed site-specific exemption to the zoning and development bylaw to permit a commercial daycare center to operate on the subject property. Over to you, Sonia.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Madam Chair and respective members of the board. This is a request to proceed to public consultation to consider a site-specific exemption in the heavy industrial M2 zone of the zoning and development bylaw as it pertains to 94 Watts Avenue, PID 757484, which proposes the existing building on the subject property to be used as a commercial daycare center, and a commercial daycare center be added as an additional permitted use within the M2 zoning that applies to the property. The applicant is the authorized agent of Doojam Inc., the owner of the subject property. The applicant is also the owner of Alpha Holdings, Inc., which operates Just For You Children Center, currently locating at 51 Watts Avenue, which is situated, situated southwest of the subject property. The subject property is currently occupied by a single-story structure formerly used as a research center. The surrounding area contains a mix of business park industrial M3 and heavy industrial M2 zone properties. The properties located adjacent to the north and south of the subject property are also within the business park industrial M3 zone. This is the air photo of the subject property. If the proposed site-specific exemption is approved to proceed to pub- public consultation phase, the Planning and Heritage Department will notify the public of the future public meeting date in accordance with Section 3.10.4 of the zoning and development bylaw. Mail notification letter will be sent to all owners within 100 meters of the subject property. Here is a quick summary of the attributes. Some of the positive attributes are that the property use would help to address the, uh, address and alleviate current de- demand for new and expanded daycare centers in Charlottetown. Also, the proposed use would provide a supporting service for working families within a well-established employment area close to where people work. The official plan's supposed to create business parks which have services and facilities that are state-of-the-art and responsive in an evolutionary sense. Some neutral attributes are that the use would occupy a building that is otherwise currently vacant. And a few shortcomings is that, um, the proposed development could impact the existing privacy that abuting users have become accustomed to over time. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend to council to approve the request to proceed to public consultation to consider a site-specific exemption in the heavy industrial M2 zone of zoning and development bylaw as it pertains to 94 Watts Avenue, PID 757484, which proposes that the existing building on the subject property be used as a commercial daycare center, and a commercial daycare center be added as an additional permitted use for the zoning applies to the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Um, any questions? No questions? So does somebody want to move this on to council? Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor McCabe, um, that we will, um, accept staff's recommendation to move this on to council to proceed to public consultation? So the question, the resolutions on the floor? Any questions? Okay. So all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you very much for that, and thank you, Sonia. Okay, next item on the agenda. 149151 Great George Street, PID 342386 and 342402. And we have our manager of planning, um, development planning on the phone to present this, David Gundrum. And this is a request to recommend to council to proceed to public consultation concerning a proposed site-specific exemption to the zoning and development bylaw to br- to permit an eight-story, 85-unit apartment building with ground floor commercial space on the subject property within the downtown core, which is zoned DC zone, that would be subject to the bonus height, uh, provisions of the zoning and development bylaw. Over to you, David. Over to you, David.
Good morning, Chair Yankoff. Can everyone see the presentation up on the screen there? Great. So as the deputy mayor mentioned, this is an application for site-specific exemption request, and it's a request to proceed to public consultation concerning that site-specific exemption request within the downtown core zone, which would allow for an eight-story, 85-unit apartment building on the subject property that would have ground-floor commercial space. The following image is an aerial image showing the location of the subject property in the center of the screen, located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Great George Street and Kent Street. Again, the site-specific exemption would replace the existing two-story commercial building on the subject property with an eight-story, 85-unit apartment building having ground-floor commercial space. The following images on the screen are proposed renderings of what the building would look like as submitted by the applicants. Property, again, is located at the southwest corner of Great George Street and Kent Street. It is within the downtown core DC zone, is adjacent to established commercial and mixed residential uses. And again, the subject property currently contains a two-story commercial building which contains office and business uses that has been present on the, on the site for many years. So just again, to summarize, the proposed change of use for the site from commercial office space to contain primarily residential use in a higher-density format is in general agreement with the applicable policies and objectives of the official plan for the downtown core land use designation. Proposed change of use, while it would displace commercial space in the downtown core, would offer opportunity to house more residents that would be in close proximity to existing amenities, and the development would offer synergies to support existing established commercial businesses in the immediate area by drawing more residents into the downtown core. The official plan does support the creation of higher-density residential uses in the downtown core. So our recommendation at this point is, Planning and Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend to council to approve the request to proceed to public consultation to consider a site-specific exemption in the downtown core DC zone of the zoning and development bylaw as it pertains to 149 151 Great George Street, PID numbers 342386 and 342402, which proposes to construct an eight-story, 85-unit apartment building having ground-floor commercial space that would be subject to the bonus height provisions of the zoning and development bylaw. So that is a general summary of the development proposal and the recommendation, staff recommendation to planning board concerning the application. And I'll just stop sharing screen at this point and turn it back over to the chair for any questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'll just open it up to you folks. Does anyone have any questions on this application at this stage? Okay. So staff's recommendation is to recommend to council to approve the request to proceed to public consultation. So do I have somebody want to move that? Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Any questions on the resolution? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay. So this will move on to council for public consultation consideration. Thank you for that. So our final item on the agenda for this evening is, again, our manager, David Gundrum, was here, manager of development planning, to present this application, and it's 20 Ralden Avenue, PID 396937. It's a request to recommend to council to proceed to public consultation concerning a proposed site-specific exemption to the zoning and development bylaw to permit an automotive repair shop to operate on the subject property within the low-density residential zone. Over to you, David.
Thank you, Chair Yankoff. And again, this is an application, request to proceed to public consultation concerning a site-specific exemption request from zoning that would permit a, proposes to permit an automotive repair shop on the subject property, municipally addressed as 20 Ralden Avenue, PID number 396937, which is within the residential R2 zone. Subject property is shown here on the center of the screen. It's at the southeast corner of the intersection of Ralden Avenue and Dart Drive. Again, the site-specific exemption request is intended to facilitate an automotive repair facility on the subject property, which would be a conversion of the existing single-story light industrial building on the subject property, which is approximately 325 square meters in size, shown on the air photo on the slide. Property, again, is located at southeast corner, intersection of Ralden Avenue and Dart Drive, located within the low-density residential R2 zone. It is adjacent to established residential uses, primarily single-detached and semi-detached in nature. The subject property contains a single-story, double-bay shop building, which has been the site of a plumbing and heating business for many years on the subject property, which has a legal non-conforming status under zoning. Proposed change of use, so an overview of the staff review of the application to this point, proposed change of use would evolve the existing legal non-conforming use, being a plumbing and heating business, into one of similar scope, which is focused on a different skilled trade, being automotive repair. The proposed change of use would not challenge or alter the historic light industrial nature and character of the subject property, and proposes to introduce a new service on the site that would be of benefit and in proximity to local residents who would make use of the service. The official plan supports creation of new industrial land uses in response to market-based evolutionary changes in the community. And to summarize our recommendation at this point, based on what this planning department has received in support of the application, is that Planning and Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend to council to approve the request to proceed to public consultation to consider a site-specific exemption in the low-density residential R2 zone of the zoning and development bylaw as it pertains to 20 Ralden Avenue, PID number 396937, which proposes that the existing building on the subject property be used as an automotive repair shop, and that an automotive repair shop be added as an additional permitted use for the zoning that applies to the, to the subject property. So that is a summary of the application request and recommendation, and I'll stop sharing screen at this point and turn it back over to the chair for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, David. Any questions on this application at this stage as we look at staff's recommendation to proceed to public consultation? No questions? Okay. So do I have somebody want to move that? Moved by Lee, seconded by Paul, that we accept staff's recommendation to ask council to approve this request to proceed to public consultation for a consideration of a site-specific exemption. So the resolution's out there? Any questions on the resolution? If not, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you. Rosemary, do you have any questions? You can type those in if you did.
We can't see the document anymore.
Okay.
Hi, Alena. Alena, I've been online for the whole...
There she is. There you are.
Yeah, I've been there for an echo. Anyway, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much for that. David, just before we wrap up, if council approves these four for public consultation, will these proceed to the July 17th meeting?
Through the chair, that's the, the current plan for all of them, perhaps save and except for the, the Great George Street apartment development proposal. And I didn't mention this during the presentation, but because that development's in the 500 lot area, it is subject to design review. We are still pending comments back from the design reviewer, and we would prefer to have those in hand before we hold the public meeting in regards. So we may have a pause on that one until later in the summer, depending when we get the design review in from the design reviewer. But otherwise, the other applications that were provided for tonight, we're going to aim for that July meeting, as mentioned.
Great. And along with that, the application from last month for the community fridge site-specific will also be on that agenda. Is that correct?
Correct. That will be going in July as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that. Any introduction of new business? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Beck. All those in favor? Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Good night.